Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the United States Sentencing Commission's Public Hearing on Synthetic Drugs, First Offenders, and Alternatives to Incarceration. The Commission appreciates the attendance of those joining us here, as well as those watching our live-stream broadcast on the Commission's website. As always, we welcome and encourage the significant public interest in federal sentencing issues and the work of the Commission. I want to start by introducing the other members of the Commission. To my immediate left is Professor Rachel Barco, who is the Siegel Family Professor of Regulatory Law and Policy at the New York University School of Law. She serves as the Faculty Director of the Center on the Administration of Criminal Law at the Law School. To my immediate right is Judge Charles Pryor, who is a Senior District Judge for the Northern District of California, and has served as the United States District Judge since 1998. And two to my left is Judge Danny Reeves, is a District Judge for the Eastern District of Kentucky, and has served in that position since 2001. Zachary Belatho is the Ex officio Commissioner from the Department of Justice. Commissioner Belatho serves as the Deputy Chief of Staff and Associate Deputy Attorney General to the Deputy Attorney General of the United States, and he's supposed to be joining us by phone. Zach, can you hear us okay?
I can, Judge. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us by phone. Zach has a very good reason for not being here in person. He is, as he should be, with his spouse this week in North Carolina, because they just welcomed the birth of their new daughter. So congratulations.
Yes, very.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Before we begin the hearing, I want to briefly update the public on some of the Commission's most recent publications and actions. Last week, the Commission released its 2017 Annual Report and Source Book of Federal Sentencing Statistics, which is available on our website. The source book is a comprehensive compilation of sentencing data on every felony and Class A misdemeanor sentenced in the federal courts. In fiscal year 2017, there were 66,873 cases reported to the Commission, a decrease of 869 cases from the prior fiscal year. On Monday, the Commission launched our web app containing a mobile-friendly version of the current Guidelines Manual. I've already downloaded mine. The Guidelines app is an interactive web-based application accessible through any Internet browser and features new tools to assist in understanding and applying the federal sentencing guidelines. It allows users to quickly search through the Guidelines Manual by guideline or keyword and can assist in determining guideline ranges in the sentencing table, base offense levels in the drug quantity table, and marijuana equivalencies for substances referenced in the drug equivalency tables. The app is accessible on a wide variety of devices, including desktops and mobile devices, and the Commission hopes it will be a useful resource for practitioners and the public. Tomorrow, the Commission will issue a publication analyzing mandatory minimum penalties for firearms offenses in the federal system. This is the third publication in our series on mandatory minimum penalties. Firearms offenses are the second-most common offenses carrying mandatory minimum penalties in the federal system after drug offenses, which the Commission previously analyzed in a report released last October. This publication provides sentencing data on firearms offenses that carry mandatory minimum penalties and their impact on the federal prison population. This publication also highlights changes and trends regarding firearms offenses that have occurred since the Commission's 2011 report. Today's public hearing will focus on synthetic drugs, first offenders, and alternatives to incarceration. During the current amendment cycle, the Commission voted to publish proposed amendments to the federal sentencing guidelines to address the treatment of synthetic drugs under the guidelines and to provide adjustments in the guidelines for first-time offenders. The Commission's proposed amendment on synthetic drugs would adopt a class-based approach for synthetic cannabinoids and cannabinoids, two types of synthetic drugs studied by the Commission over the past few years. The proposed amendment defines the term "synthetic cannabinoid" and establishes a single marijuana equivalency for each class. The Commission also proposed an increase to penalties for fentanyl offenses and a more exact guideline definition of the terms "fentanyl" and "fentanyl analog." An enhancement for misrepresenting or marketing fentanyl or fentanyl analogues as another substance was also proposed. Finally, the Commission's proposed amendment regarding first-time offenders would increase the pool of offenders eligible for alternative sentencing options. This proposed amendment is informed by the Commission's multi-year study of approaches to increase the use of alternatives to incarceration and the Commission's multi-year study of recidivism. We look forward to hearing from our expert witnesses on the proposed amendments on the agenda today. At the end of each panel's testimony, panelists may receive questions from commissioners, and I will then give Commissioner Belatho the opportunity to ask his questions over the phone. We look forward to a thoughtful and engaging discussion. Your time will begin when the light turns green. Yellow means there is one minute left, and red means your time has expired. As I like to say when I'm back in court, please do not treat the red light as aspirational. Be mindful of our time. Our first three panels will focus on the Commission's amendment regarding synthetic drugs. Our first panelists are Robert Duncan and Kevin Butler. Mr. Duncan is the United States Attorney for the Eastern District of Kentucky, a position he has held since November 2017. Before his appointment, he served more than a decade as an Assistant United States Attorney in the same district. He is a graduate of Center College and the University of Kentucky School of Law. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Butler is the federal public defender for the Northern District of Alabama, where my home chambers are. He has served as an attorney in the federal defender program for 25 years, serving as the chief deputy defender and the chief trial attorney for the Middle District of Alabama and as an assistant federal defender in the Eastern District of California and the District of Nevada. Mr. Butler is a graduate of Cornell University and the Sandra Day O'Connor College of Law at Arizona State University. Welcome, Mr. Butler. Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, sir. Judge Pryor, members of the Sentencing Commission, thank you for the opportunity to present the Department of Justice's views on the Commission's proposed amendments to the U.S. sentencing guidelines related to synthetic drugs.
Sorry, could you move the microphone closer to you?
Yes, sir. Is that better?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Keep speaking, I'll tell you.
First, I'd like to discuss the proposed guideline amendments for synthetic cannabinoids. The Commission proposes adopting a class approach that would result in a single marijuana equivalency for all synthetic cannabinoids. The Department supports the class approach for these substances, and we believe it will make sentencing under the guidelines more efficient and promote consistency and uniformity in sentencing outcomes. As DEA witnesses explained at the October 4 hearing, all synthetic cannabinoids share a common chemical structure well-accepted in the scientific community.
Mr. Duncan, maybe the issue is to move that mic.
I think so. That's right.
Independent scientists Dr. Dudley and Dr. Gatch, called by the Commission to testify at the same hearing, made the same characterization. Moreover, a class approach makes sense, given that traffickers pass off one cannabinoid as another, and users rarely know the specific compound they are in fact consuming. As for the equivalency that the Commission should assign to the class, two approaches present themselves. First, the Commission could look closely at the equivalencies the courts have adopted in all past synthetic cannabinoid cases and simply apply an average. According to the Commission's data for the fiscal year 2015, in 186 cannabinoid cases predominantly involving methylo, APVP, and MDPV, the mean equivalency was 1 to 364, and the median equivalency 1 to 380. The Department has no objection to setting the equivalency at 1 to 380. As a second approach, the Commission could start with the median equivalency from past cases, but then go beyond the confines of Application Note 6 and also address the relative toxicity of these substances. The Commission has been presented with a great deal of evidence on unexpected adverse health reactions, hospital emergencies, and impacts on first responders following the use of synthetic cannabinoids, including psychosis, paranoia, hallucinations, combativeness, agitation, tremors, seizures, and death. For the second approach, the Commission could also consider that, as discussed by DEA chemists and pharmacologists, synthetic cannabinoids such as methylo, MDPV, methadone, and APVP have characteristics similar to amphetamine, methamphetamine, MDMA, and cocaine, and that three of the four substances have equivalencies higher than 1 to 380. As concerns synthetic cannabinoids, for largely the same reasons, the Department also supports a class approach. A class approach will address the ongoing problem of new synthetic cannabinoids being introduced into the illicit drug market in a manner designed to circumvent the existing statutory and regulatory framework. Adding an equivalency for each known synthetic cannabinoid would be impractical, as there are thousands of possible synthetic cannabinoids derived from the indole or indazol chemical structures alone. Once again, the Commission must decide which precise marijuana equivalency should be applied to the class. The Commission has provided three options: 1 to 167, 1 to 334, and 1 to 500. A review of the cases involving different synthetic cannabinoids demonstrates that many courts have arrived at an equivalency of 1 to 167 under the Application Note 6 process. However, just as with synthetic cannabinoids, Application Note 6 does not ask the court to evaluate the most serious dangers associated with the substance. Dr. Treckey explained that unlike THC in marijuana, synthetic cannabinoids have produced multi-organ failures, seizures, and deaths. As noted by Dr. Gatch, it is synthetic cannabinoids, unlike THC in marijuana, which produce the most severe adverse effects, including central nervous system effects such as extreme agitation, seizures, stroke, and coma. Finally, unlike THC in marijuana, synthetic cannabinoids were specifically developed and marketed to evade U.S. law. Accordingly, the Department believes for synthetic cannabinoids, the equivalency should be higher than the 1 to 167 equivalency currently provided for THC. The Commission has also asked whether the guidelines should distinguish between synthetic cannabinoids in actual form, such as in powder form, and a synthetic cannabinoid as part of a mixture. As you're aware, the general rule in guidelines is that the weight of a controlled substance set forth in the table refers to the entire weight of any mixture or substance containing a detectable amount of the controlled substance. As a practical matter, it would be virtually impossible for DEA laboratories to readily determine the amount of synthetic cannabinoid that has been applied to plant matter in a particular drug packet. In December testimony, DEA scientist Dr. Daniel Willenbring explained the number of practical difficulties. There's a problem of getting the chemical off the leaf, then there's the problem of having a validated method for every synthetic cannabinoid, and even if the lab has done all this, because of the fact that traffickers use cement mixers and garden sprayers in manufacturing and packaging these products, causing hot spots and cool spots, if the lab opens one packet and simply takes a sample of that packet and figures out how much drug is in that particular sample, the estimate may not apply to the rest of the packet or to any of the other packets. In sum, this proposal would create serious practical problems. Now, turning to the amendments concerning fentanyl and fentanyl analogues, it would be difficult to overstate the impact of the opioid crisis that is currently gripping our nation. The Eastern District of Kentucky, where I serve, is United States Attorney, has been one of the hardest hit by the crisis. The 2016 overdose fatality report for Kentucky, prepared by the Kentucky Office of Drug Control Policy, noted that there were 1,404 overdose deaths in Kentucky. Fentanyl was a factor in 47% of those overdoses. For Fayette County, the overdose deaths for 2017, and Fayette County is Lexington, Kentucky, where DEA's Attorney's Office headquarters is, there were 179 overdose deaths. 95 involved fentanyl, five involved fentanyl analogues, and two involved car fentanyl. On a daily basis, I see the death and destruction caused by fentanyl and fentanyl analogues. We have prosecuted numerous death resulting cases, many of which involving fentanyl, and there are more in the pipeline. The lethality of fentanyl and fentanyl analogues is virtually unmatched, but that unmatched lethality is not currently reflected in the guidelines. Although opioid tolerance may develop in users, as little as 2 milligrams is a lethal dose for most people. In contrast, the average lethal dose for heroin is approximately 200 milligrams. Yet, the lowest quantity threshold for fentanyl in the drug quantity table, 4 grams, is at a level 12. Thus, a defendant trafficking in up to 4 grams of fentanyl receives a base offense level of 10, of 12, or 10 after the common 2-level reduction for acceptance of responsibility. For a defendant who pleads guilty and falls within criminal history category 1, a base offense level of 10 yields a Zone B guidelines range of 6 to 12 months. A defendant who sells enough fentanyl to kill almost 2,000 people should not be eligible for probation. In contrast, for heroin, a similar but less lethal opioid, the same guideline range would apply up to 10 grams of heroin, which is enough for 50 lethal doses. As the Commission is aware, the Department asked the Commission to increase the penalties for both fentanyl and fentanyl analogues. The Commission's proposed amendment takes a slightly different approach by changing the base offense levels for fentanyl to parallel those established for fentanyl analogues. Although the Department would like to have seen a proposed amendment increasing the penalties for both fentanyl and fentanyl analogues, we support the proposed amendment because it will ultimately result in increased penalties for those who traffic in fentanyl. For example, a defendant who sells 2.5 grams of fentanyl today would receive, before an acceptance of responsibility adjustment, a base offense level of 12 and a guideline range of 10 to 16 months. Under the proposed amendment, that same defendant would receive a base offense level of 16 and a guideline range of 21 to 27 months. This is a step in the right direction, and the Department urges the Commission to adopt the change. The Commission has also proposed a new guideline definition for fentanyl analog. The new definition will resolve an ambiguity in the guidelines, and the Department supports that amendment. Finally, I would like to discuss the proposed enhancement for offenses involving fentanyl and fentanyl analogues misrepresented as another substance. Drug traffickers are now mixing fentanyl and fentanyl analogues with other drugs and using commercially available pill presses to produce pills that contain fentanyl and fentanyl analogues but appear to be less lethal prescription drugs like oxycodone and hydrocodone. Both of these practices are dangerous and are directly related to the increase in overdose deaths that our country is experiencing right now. The Department supports the amendment, and we thank the Commission for this important change. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to share the Department's views on these important issues. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you. Mr. Butler?
Thank you very much. I thank the Commission for providing me the opportunity to testify on behalf of the federal defenders. I've had the great fortune of serving as an attorney in the federal defender program since 1992. Unfortunately, during my entire practice, the sentencing guidelines have been inseparably intertwined with the mandatory minimum set forth in the Anti-Drug Abuse Act of 1986. Consequently, drug punishments have never been based on empirical analysis of what a fair and proportionate sentence should be. The most infamous example of this flaw was basing crack guidelines on mandatory minimums. I have personally represented hundreds of people charged with crack offenses. Most were low-income, most were minority, most had minor criminal history, most were addicted to drugs, were couriers, low-level street dealers, or facilitating family members. Many had mental health issues. Most were charged with nonviolent offenses involving 5 to 50 grams of crack. However, for this nonviolent offense, these people received sentences ranging from 60 months to the rest of their life in prison, as a consequence that is recommended under the guidelines. As a consequence of sentencing policy tied directly to what we call politically motivated mandatory minimums, the prison population exploded and families and communities were decimated. The Commission rightly urged changes regarding crack. Now, the Commission's proposed synthetic drug amendments not only have the potential of repeating the disastrous crack sentencing structure, but exacerbating its flaws. The defender community is mindful of the impact and harms posed by fentanyl. In one tragic case, a defender represented a middle-aged man with serious mental health issues who voluntarily entered a drug treatment program. He was seduced by a drug counselor at that program who let him out of the program, gave him money, and took him to a dealer to buy heroin. After he almost died of an overdose, a friend reached out to this man to get heroin. She died after he unknowingly gave her heroin that was laced with fentanyl. At sentencing, his guideline range was 210 to 240 months in prison. However, the court accepted the plea offered by both the government and the defense and sentenced him to 15 years. This sentence was the equivalent to second-degree manslaughter in New York. I provide this case to underscore the point that, under our current guidelines, the courts already have the authority to impose severe sentences when serious bodily injury or death results. A person with no criminal history, who was convicted under 21 U.S.C. 841A1, is subject to a penalty of 235 to 292 months in jail. A person with one prior drug offense could be facing a mandatory life sentence. As the Commission concluded in 2015, ratcheting up a penalty for a drug guideline does not deter crime, but instead it increases sentencing disparity. Additionally, in 2016, in 63% of the fentanyl cases, the courts imposed sentences below the current guidelines. This data strongly suggests that if penalties are increased, litigation will increase, and courts, using the guidance provided by the Supreme Court in Kimbrough, will set aside these unempirically based ratios. Furthermore, this amendment undermines the Commission's and the guidelines' goal of providing just and proportionate sentences. First, instead of targeting major traffickers, the amendment will most directly and dramatically increase the penalties for couriers, lookouts, and other minor participants whom the Commission's own data shows didn't know they possessed fentanyl. Second, by setting the same ratio for fentanyl and its analogues without consideration of purity, the proposed amendment will lead to a disproportionate sentence. As an addict who possesses the same weight of an adulterated mixture containing a minute fraction of fentanyl will be subject to the same sentence as a major trafficker who possesses the same weight of the pure substance. If a comprehensive review of the drug guidelines is not favored... One moment. Can you all hear me?
I can hear you, but I was just wondering if... Maybe move that other mic. Just concerned with that red light blinking that you're not being picked up, Mr. Butler. Keep going.
Keep going. Okay. If a comprehensive review of the drug guidelines is not favored, we would ask the Commission to use the same analysis it did with LSD when assessing fentanyl. Like LSD, we would ask the Commission to utilize a dosage system that excludes the weight of the carrier mixture or substance, which oftentimes far exceeds the weight of the controlled substance itself in setting the base offense level. This can possibly be done by amending 2D 1.1 to encourage a downward departure whenever the weight of the mixture or substance containing a detectable amount of the drug exceeds the weight of the active ingredient, and two, encouraging a downward or upward departure whenever the potency of fentanyl is greater or lesser than alpha-methamphetamine. The definition proposed by the Commission, we believe, also is too vague. I'm not a chemist, but Dr. Logan testified, I believe, on December 5th, that when determining if a given substance is a fentanyl analog, the chemical must have three characteristic domains. That form of specificity is missing in this definition. Because this detail is missing, chemicals that may not be related to fentanyl may be included because they are similar. To avoid non-fentanyl analogues being swept in, we would ask the definition to include "effect similar to fentanyl." We would also ask the definition not use "represented or intended to have the same effect." This vague language would lead to circumstances where substances that are not chemically similar to fentanyl but represented by someone as fentanyl are subject to enhanced penalties. We also don't think the guidelines should punish people who did not knowingly misrepresent a given substance as something else. As this option would penalize a significant percentage of individuals whom the Commission's own data shows unwittingly possessed the drug fentanyl, that is, in a mixture usually with heroin. However, if the Commission opts to include a specific offense characteristic related to knowledge, it should add no more than two levels, and two, require that defendant knowingly misrepresented or knowingly marketed the mixture or substance as another substance. Turning to synthetic cannabinoids, the proposed amendments to synthetic cannabinoids highlights the empirical flaws of the current guideline drug equivalency table, and two, underscores the perils of building a classification and sentencing ratios whose foundations are based upon a fiction. Over 30 years ago, the United States sentencing guideline promulgated the ratio of 1 gram of THC equals 167 grams of marijuana. The ratio appears to have been plucked from thin air, and in litigation, the government has conceded there was no scientific basis for the ratio of 1 to 167. However, the proposed amendment, synthetic cannabinoid amendment, builds upon this phantom ratio. Rather than use or even set a higher ratio, we ask the Commission to adjust the THC ratio to reflect the empirical data that has been developed that indicates that the average THC content in marijuana is 14%. The lack of empirical data supporting this 1 to 167 ratio is reflected in the fact that in 2015, in over 70% of synthetic cannabinoid cases, the court imposed a sentence below, below, the current advisory range set at 1 to 167. In addition to the flawed ratio, the proposed class and definition has three problems. First, there are multiple variations in chemical composition of different synthetic cannabinoids. In fact, there's been internal disagreement within the DEA whether certain chemical structures are in fact synthetic cannabinoids. Second, these widely varying compounds do not have the same pharmacological effect as THC on CB1 receptors. Some, for instance, have no effect on CB1 receptors; some impact CB2 receptors. Third, synthetic cannabinoids have varying potency and strength per unit. Because of the lack of consensus in the scientific community, we ask the Commission not to adopt a class-based approach and amend Note 6 to give the courts a simpler harms-based analysis. If the Commission does impose a class, we ask two things. First, to reduce chances of unwarranted disparities, the definition should focus on drugs that are full agonists of CB1 receptors. Additionally, list specific examples of what substances fall within the class. This would help avoid confusion and disparity. Second, there should be a distinction between synthetic cannabinoids possessed in actual form and those in a substance and mixture. Finally, we would ask that a base offense level 12, which essentially mandates prison, not be included. The guidelines shouldn't mandate prison where there is no harm, and if there are mitigating circumstances present, that the court might determine warrant a sentence other than prison. I ask the Commission to review my written testimony as to synthetic cannabinoids. It addresses all my points.
Yeah, if you needed a minute or so more, Mr. Butler, that's okay, since we interrupted your testimony.
This should only take a minute or two more.
Okay.
Thank you. In over 70% of synthetic cannabinoid cases in 2015, the court imposed a sentence below the advisory guideline range. Additionally, because there's such a multitude of different types of synthetic cannabinoids, and the potency and effects amongst this multitude of synthetic cannabinoids varies greatly, a class-based approach would be unfair and lead to disparate sentences. For example, ethylene is less powerful than methylo. Methylo is 50% less powerful than MDMA. However, if I was a low-level drug dealer in possession of 50 grams of ethylene, I'd be subject to the same sentence as somebody which is very much less powerful than MDMA. I'd be subject to the same penalty as somebody who did possess MDMA. If the Commission sets ratios for synthetic cannabinoids, it should set different ratios for different synthetic cannabinoids. It should specify the pharmacological effects associated with each cannabinoid, provide information on how to apply the class, identify and commentary the specific substances it considered in adopting the class, and set the ratio at no greater than 1 to 100, as this synthetic is less, on average, is less potent than MDMA. And finally, include a departure provision tied to potency and direct harms. If a class is established, methicannabinol should not be included. It is not chemically similar; it is substantially more potent than the most common... It should not be included. Finally, for the same reason stated as to cannabinoids, the defender strongly... Finally, as for the same reasons stated as to cannabinoids, the defender strongly opposed the base offense level recommended, that being 12, for the same reasons. Thank you for this opportunity to address the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
One question that I have for both of you, I guess, really, is we have other testimony that talks about, we continue to take the approach we do that's based on weight, there'll be an incentive for the distributors of these drugs to make them ever more potent. And I'd like to just get the reaction, particularly of the government about that concern, but also you as well, Mr. Butler, if you do, about just the worry that it'd be counterproductive to do that because of the incentives it would create if we don't take potency into account in some way, either with a departure provision or otherwise, because of what it'll mean for the incentives.
I think, from the perspective of, of law enforcement, we recognize that, that drug traffickers will often consider increasing potency if a product doesn't sell, and through, specifically with the synthetics, through self-selection, those products that aren't selling will be withered away and not be available, but, and naturally, they'll want to increase the potency to make it more, more profitable for the drug sale.
But what if they, what do they also have an incentive to do that if we're basing this on weight without a consideration of potency at all? So if it's, you know, if it's a strictly weight-based kind of calculation, the idea is to make the product more potent so it weighs less than what you need to distribute it, has the government considered that relationship?
I don't know that, that it would affect the drug distributor making the substance weigh less to get more potency. Specifically with synthetic cannabinoids, they're going to use the same 1 gram, 2 gram dose packet, and just put more chemical, mixture of the chemical. Won't necessarily increase or decrease the, the weight of the actual package.
And with fentanyl?
With fentanyl, there doesn't have to be nearly as... The doses of fentanyl are, are much, much less, and fentanyl is deadly within as little as 2 milligrams, so I don't know that, that we necessarily need to increase. Fentanyl is plenty deadly enough, and to increase the base offense levels, recognizing the danger of, of fentanyl is appropriate.
Well, I'd like to ask the government, there's no question now, and we've received a lot of testimony about the dangers, the horrific dangers of very, very small quantities of fentanyl in, in different drugs, and that's a problem that I think appropriately we have to address. The question really is, in my mind, is whether or not we add, for example, a requirement that the defendant know that this, that there was the introduction of this drug, or fentanyl, into other controlled substances, whether that is going to make a difference in terms of enforcement. And in particular, I mean, you, you take a look at the whole drug structure, the law that's been around for years, which is, to the, to the satisfaction of prosecutors, is that all you need to do for, for a conviction, basically, is to show that the defendant knew that, that, that the substance was a controlled substance, not which substance. But it seems to me a rather large extension to say, not only are we going to attribute criminal responsibility to a defendant for the controlled substance, we're also going to assign an augmentation of that sentence if, in fact, the controlled substance which the defendant may not have known what it was, further has to know that not even knowing what it was, he or she has to know that it was corrupted by the introduction of, of fentanyl, as an example. I don't for a moment question the, the seriousness of the harm that can be caused. What I'm trying to do is figure out how you assign criminal responsibility, because ultimately that's what judges have to do. So, I'd like to know, is there any evidence, in your experience, or the department's experience, that suggests that if you don't have a requirement that the defendant knew, for example, that the, that the substance was adulterated by this other drug, that that would reduce or otherwise address the harm, or the incidence of, of criminal activity? Is that question clear? It's sort of a long speech, so I apologize for that, but my family gives long speeches.
It did remind me of somebody.
However, however, I mean, really what I'm asking you is what evidence is here? Because we have to base this on evidence. What evidence is there that if you do away with or don't include a requirement of knowledge of the defendant that the substance is adulterated, that that will affect law enforcement?
Got that?
I'm trying to process.
It's not easy. I apologize for that.
Regarding the, the knowledge requirement, we believe that the, the state of the law and the, the state of the guidelines as currently set is appropriate, that you just have to know that you're distributing a controlled substance to sustain a conviction. We believe that, that is sufficient as is.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question. This really relates to fentanyl more than it does the other substances, and I'd like for both of you to respond if you could. And it goes to this whole concept that we've always had, that we draw these distinctions between major drug traffickers and street-level dealers. In light of the dangerousness of fentanyl, where a street-level dealer can kill a dozen people on a weekend, is it fair to draw that distinction now, or, or can we say that street-level dealers are now major dealers when we're talking about fentanyl?
Judge, I would say for fentanyl, since the quantity for lethality are so low, that you can be a major fentanyl dealer and have a relatively, what we consider a small quantity of any other, any other drug. When you consider that, you know, the lethal dose is 2 milligrams, if you have 4, 5, 10 grams, that's, that's a significant amount of fentanyl that can kill potentially, or at least harm a very significant segment of the population.
I, I guess my, my response would be similar to what was echoed in my earlier comments. The focus of both the guidelines and I think our criminal justice system has been, our guidelines, purity, for instance, is related to role in the offense. People who tend to have the most concentrated portions of this drug are more culpable than those who are lower in the chain and have less concentrated. Under your hypothetical, if a, a courier or a street-level dealer unknowingly comes into possession of a mixture of substance that has not been processed correctly and is potentially more lethal, the fact remains, though, that that individual is, is not knowingly in, in possession of that lethal dosage. When it goes out, it might have impact, but that, that was not his intent at the time of the distribution. My point simply being is, under our criminal justice system and the guidelines, it is, it has always been our position that people at the, people who are more culpable, the leader, the organizers, the major traffickers, should receive sentences that are greater than the lower-level persons. Yes, in fentanyl, with fentanyl in the example, for instance, that I have, an individual distributed drugs that were laced, but the guidelines provide an opportunity, provide the courts with the tools necessary to impose adequate punishment if serious bodily injury or death results. Simply ramping up the ratio for fentanyl will not serve as a turn to that lower-level person, lower-level person in the scheme.
I have one other question, if I could, just to shift to the cannabinoids. So we have testimony, and we'll hear more later from probation officers, about one possibility to deal with the mixture versus the pure form when it's sprayed on the plant material, that if it's basically roughly 1 gram of the material, you could kind of get 14 times the plant quantity, they have a suggestion that we could just divide by 14 how we treat a mixture as opposed to the pure form. So, you know, whatever number we would set if we did for a class-based approach, that could be the amount that we would set for the pure form, but then we could divide that by 14, and that's how we would treat the, the mixture. And I'd like to get your reaction as that, as a possible solution. So instead of having to do, as you pointed out, Mr. Duncan, the testing and figure out if you got a hotspot or a cool spot, it would avoid that by just basically saying, we'll just assume it's roughly, you know, 14 times the plant material, and so we divide whatever the plant quantity was by 14 to get our number. And I'd like your, if that's a, that's a decent surrogate for trying to get this balance between the fact that it's going to be far greater in weight than it would be with potency, is just this kind of dividing by 14?
Well, I guess our response and our position is, we're not in favor of that proposal, given the fact that there's such wide, speaking, for instance, on cathinones, well, there's such, I mean, excuse me, cannab...
This would be for the cannabinoids.
They're, speaking as to cannabinoids, there's such a wide variety of chemical compositions and potency. Setting a ratio that's not based upon empirical data and then doing this 14 division ladder, still, we still have the fundamental flaw of setting this ratio inappropriately. So I guess our position is, we would oppose the ratio that is currently being set.
And Professor, our, our position would be that the commission should assign, in one of the three proposals that the commission has, has put forth, I think that the scenario proposed by the probation office, I think, again, is, would be too difficult, too unwieldy to, to employ, and we would suggest the commission just go with a class-based approach for picking one of those three numbers proposed.
Zach, do you have any questions? Commissioner Blatho?
No, thank you, Judge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Of course, we have your written testimony as well.
Thank you, Honor.